So the Vice Mayor had a good point. I mean, can we reopen the public hearing and hear from the applicant, or is that?
Um, well, let's see. I mean, yeah, I think you could just have the applicant make a comment if you'd like to at this point.
Wonderful. Mr. Vidovic, would you like to make a comment?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council people, the only issue right now which to speak about is a development agreement. You have a gatekeeper process, and I'm speaking to one person who's five years from now is going to be as pretty as she is now, okay? So, we had a process that we went through, a gatekeeper process, and after the gatekeeper process, a lot happened, and that money that was negotiated was part of the whole thing. This council voted for it over a year ago, and you voted for it, and it's not consistent to all of a sudden, at this minute arbitrarily change it. It's just not really proper form. And whether it seems inequitable with the other hotel, there are a lot of circumstances that go, that are involved. And I think to change it right now, you know, we then don't have a development agreement. And I think the city is much better off with the development agreement and collecting the $500,000 and getting all the other benefits than to all of a sudden throw out that development agreement.
Thank you.
So maybe you change your mind.
All right. Thank you. So, where were we here? It was a vote on...
So, we had a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Mayor, I believe. No, who was...
No, not me.
Who seconded that?
Rod.
Oh, seconded by...
I believe.
I have Sharf.
Wait, which did I second?
I have you seconding.
Seconding which motion?
Vice Mayor Paul's motion.
Right, right. I seconded Vice Mayor Paul's motion.
Right.
But then there was a substitu-- was there ever a substitute motion?
And is there a second motion is the question now?
Okay, right. Is there a second motion, so?
Is there? Does someone want to put another motion on the table?
Well, we did.
And the motion was to direct the community-- so it was a motion by Councilmember Sinks. Was it seconded by Chow is the question?
Yeah.
And, well, so the motion was to direct the Community Development Director to go back to, try to renegotiate the development agreement with a $1 million community benefit payment. And is there a second to that motion?
I made the motion, but there's no, I hear no second.
Oh, I seconded. So if we, in case the negotiation fails, then we don't have a development agreement?
The item would come back to council to, well, we have a signed development agreement now. So then the item would come back to council to determine whether the council wants to approve the development agreement as proposed. Or that would be my recommendation, to bring it back.
Okay. Well, just vote on it then.
Vote on which one?
The second one.
The last motion gets voted on first. Right, so, vote with your lights.
Whether to negotiate.
Right.
Motion carries with Paul and Sharf voting no.
So there's no point in voting for Councilmember Paul?
That's right, that was a substitute motion.
Because that, that one would not, not pass.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I really like, really like the project.
Don't say sorry.
Yeah, I just need to do my best to get the most for the city.
The public hearing is closed, so just stop. We're on to item 12. Approve the mid-year financial report and budget adjustments for fiscal year 2019 to '20. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf, council members. Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here this evening to present the mid-year financial report. Along with me presenting mid-year will be Zach Korach, the city's Finance Manager. Before we get started on the agenda for the reporting of mid-year, we wanted to talk a little bit about some process changes that have occurred or will be occurring. The first is, based on council feedback and our new city manager's assessment of our process, we really dedicated some time when reviewing mid-year requests to focus on the timing of the proposals. We had heard from council before, the questions of why are we bringing it mid-year, is it not something that can wait? We're talking about the proposed budget in just a few months. We really took that focus this year when reviewing the proposals. And with that, two proposals for CIP adjustments that were requested at mid-year will actually be brought forward as part of the CIP prioritization process. We also wanted to focus on our continued transparency. This is the second quarterly report that we've posted using Open Gov Stories, which allows, we present data at a summary level that allows residents, if they so chose, to go in and click on our charts, the majority of the charts in our mid-year financial report, and get down to the account-level detail. We also continue to focus on engagement. We are currently, started the planning process for our second annual community budget meeting, Budget Invites, which was really a successful event last year, and we'll be focusing this year more on kind of the basics of forecasting as that was the feedback we received after our first meeting last April. The third thing we wanted to touch on, and this is really something that will be coming forward as part of the proposed budget. You're normally used to seeing us recommend a budget for one year. We are switching over to a biannual budget, so showing you two years of budget as opposed to just one, and we really think this will help make the budget an even better planning tool as we go forward. In addition, we anticipate some staff savings and printing cost savings as the second year budget wouldn't print a whole big book, it would just be any adjustments that we're recommending to be made. With that, we go on to the main event for the evening, which is going over the mid-year financial report. We'll go over the budget cycle, we'll go over budget status to date, we'll cover major trends and projections in the general fund, and then we'll cover fund balance for the general fund and the capital funds, which includes the Capital Reserve. Zach will take over to walk us through funding recommendations and next steps. So the budget cycle, we are here before council, either giving a formal presentation or with a staff report five times throughout the fiscal year. Currently, we're on that yellow box, which is the mid-year financial report that generally comes at the end of February or early March. The next time you'll be reporting to you on this current fiscal year's budget will be May, when we cover the third quarter, which covers the first nine months of the fiscal year. And then also in May, we kick off the next fiscal year by printing the proposed budget on May 1st, and generally the second meeting in May having the proposed budget hearing. We return in usually June, I think once before, it's been in July, for the final budget hearing and adoption, and then the final budget gets printed sometime in July. And then we start the cycle again and reporting back to you on first quarter, covering the first three months of the fiscal year. When we look at fiscal year 1920 amended budget to date through December 2019, that total budget across all funds is $207 million. And the way we get there is, we had a final budget approved of $150.5 million. To that, we had carryovers of $35.3 million, and a carryover really represents a budget authority from the previous year for a special project or something that didn't get finished that gets carried forward into the new year. So we carry forward that budget authority, and that's where that comes from. And then in addition, we had $10.7 million in encumbrance carry forward, and encumbrances are a legal obligation to pay. So think of these as purchase orders or contracts, where we've entered into these agreements, and then we carry over that budget authority related to those items. Lastly, we've had from July through December additional council-approved adjustments of $10.5 million. So this shows you the slide in summary again across all funds. The next slide shows you, and the color coding matches up to the previous slide, in a little more detail, so you can get a sense of which fund is carrying over or encumbering those additional funds or where the adjustments occurred. We also want to focus on general fund revenue and expenditures. So the previous chart was really citywide, and then we always try to come in and focus specifically on the general fund because that's where the council has the most discretion. When we're doing our projections for year-end, where we think we're going to end, we generally try to do two things. We try to do a look back to the previous year to see where we're up or down, and then we also do some trend analysis. So the following slides are really going to cover where revenues and expenditures are compared to last year. So overall, total revenue in the general fund is up 2.4 million or 7%. And what's driving that is primarily related to transient occupancy taxes. These are the hotel taxes, and that's primarily due to the opening of the Hyatt Hotel that opened in April of 2019. So this is realizing almost a full year of that revenue. In addition, a small portion of this is related to increased TOT from short-term rentals like Airbnb. The second major item driving this is increases in license and permits fees related to Valco Town Center. As we're looking, working through these slides, I just want to point out that these will not add up exactly to that difference. We try to get as close as we can to the major items, just to prevent, present those kind of at a high level. The actual financial report does go into a little more detail in each of the additional areas. So now, we focus on our expenditures. Our expenditures are down 8.4 million or 17% from the prior year. But really, the major thing driving this is our transfers out, and this is a timing issue. When we had the mid-year budget before you a year ago, we approved, you approved a transfer of $8 million to the Capital Reserve. That transfer was reported in December versus March, and thus causing this large variance. This is really a timing issue. But in addition, we have special project costs that are down, and these are related to different projects here specifically related to our water, I'm sure I get this right, our water system assessment, Apple Campus Two, and costs related to the Valco-specific plan that occurred last year and have not occurred this year or have had occurred at a much lower expense rate. Offsetting those decreases are increases in contract costs at $1.3 million or 13%, primarily driven by increased costs in the sheriff's contract, along with cost in our insurance fees associated with a settlement agreement. We have materials up an additional half a million dollars, a .5 million, 24%. This is being driven primarily due to increased utility costs. In addition, there are some increased software costs that live in this material line item due to the city's Acela, its new land management use system. Lastly, we have an increase of .6 million in salary and benefits, and this is mostly driven by negotiated increases. So as I mentioned, we try to look at our revenues and expenditures as prior year, but also trying to look at trend analysis. So we generally go back three years into the past and say, where have we historically been at this point in time, and where did we end the year, and are we on trend? And when we look at our revenues, historically, we have collected between 38 and 42% of our revenues at this point in the fiscal year. We've currently collected 41%. That's that bold number in the middle next to the triangle. So we say we're on trend, we think we're going to be ending the year with the adjustments recommended today within budget. The second, four expenditures have generally trended between 37 and 62. We're currently at 46%. And again, with the adjustments before you this evening, if those get approved, we anticipate ending the year within that amended budget number. So focusing now on fund balance. Fund balance, as we call out, is a kind of the city's savings account, so it's kind of net of revenues minus expenses. And then we continue to build a fund balance based on that savings from prior year. So when we were here speaking to you about first quarter, we anticipated we were going to end the fiscal year with $29.15 million in fund balance. It's also important to note, we're focused on unassigned fund balance. So fund balance contains many different categories. However, we focus on the unassigned because that means that those dollars haven't been specifically earmarked for something else. So again, this is where there's some discretion. Adjustments to date totaled 16.04, and we're going to go over those in just a moment. So bringing our mid-year projection for fund balance to 13.11 million. And so I'll tell you a little bit about where those dollars are going. The first is, in the report this evening, we are recommending a transfer of $20 million to the Capital Reserve. That's per the city's one-time fund balance and use policy that says, once all our other reserves are funded, any excess would go to the Capital Reserve. This is important to note that we are transferring the dollars, but we are not spending those dollars yet. We'll talk about spending those dollars when we go over the capital improvement plan coming up here in the next few months. In addition, we have $4 million reclassification of fund balance from unassigned to committed, and this is to move $4 million to the Pension Stabilization Fund. This request is in line with the funding policy that we brought to council a couple of years ago. In addition, we have a positive $10 million impact of fund balance, and that's the net of the Valco adjustment. We have another net impact of the remaining mid-year adjustments at, using about 1.7 million of fund balance. We have an additional .9 net impact of adjustments that occurred between July and December, and then an additional half a million or so, which are other minor adjustments that have added to fund balance. And that is how we go from the 29 to the 13.11. Now, this number may seem a little bit high. And the reason we're leaving the $10 million net of Valco, the idea is that those dollars will be spent over three years or more as the project goes on through staff cost or through other contract costs. And so we want to make sure we leave that as part of our unassigned reserve, so we can spend those down in the years to come. So really, what we're looking at is leaving about $3 million in unassigned through the end of the fiscal year, should any unexpected adjustments occur between now and June 30th. We focus on the same thing when we're looking at the Capital Reserve. So at first quarter, we anticipated we would end the year with a Capital Reserve of $12 million, and that anticipated a $15 million transfer from the general fund to the Capital Reserve. At mid-year, we're here saying we want to transfer 20 million, and that really makes up the nexus of the 5 million from the 12 to the 17 million. So with that, I will toss it over to Zach, who will walk you through the recommended adjustments in the mid-year.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Zach Korach, Finance Manager. The slide before you, this is a summary view of all the recommended budget adjustments. We get a look at it from a fund-type perspective as well as a department. And I won't go through each of the line items. We're going to be covering each of the adjustments in more detail in the slides to come. But in total, staff are recommending to City Council to approve additional revenues across all funds of $52.7 million, additional expenditures of $46.2 million, which would ultimately have a positive impact on the city's total fund balance of approximately $6.5 million. So jumping into the details by department, starting with Parks and Recreation, the department is requesting a total of $19,200. This is in part due to a freezer repair.
Yeah, I don't, you don't have to read every item in, no, every slide. Okay.
It's like we have to repair more than a freezer.
Okay.
This has never happened.
Okay.
Your screen's blank too.
Okay, it's back.
We're good. Sorry for the scare. So, I'll summarize. Blackberry Farm Freezer Repair, Senior Center. City staff is asking council to authorize the use of the proceeds received from hidden treasures. Community Development is requesting a total expenditure increase of $21.1 million. Again, this is predominantly related to the Valco Town Center contracts that were approved by City Council on February 18th, 2020, as well as an additional $1 million to prepare a Valco-specific plan. Public Works is requesting a total adjustment of $2.2 million. We see Valco Town Center, the line item pop up. A portion of those contracts is going to be recorded, and those activities are going to be pertaining to the Community Development Department, and a smaller portion of it will be recorded and belonging to the Public Works Department. That's why we see it appear in both departments. Staff is requesting $105,000 for street lighting. This will be a master plan agreement to address any unforeseen street lighting needs to the infrastructure system within the city. $42,000 to recuperate costs that were incurred to a fire sprinkler valve failure at the Senior Center during the month of December 2019. $100,000 for traffic calming in residential neighborhoods. This will be traffic calming measures or mitigations to, to address any speeding and cut-through traffic that is created through, through the neighborhoods. And then lastly, Blackberry Farm tree removal. There is, this is the trail connecting the Stockelmeier property to Blackberry Farm. There is one dead pine tree, as well as one large oak that has a severe lean to it that is overhanging the eighth hole at Blackberry Farm Golf Course. Total cost will be for the removal of those immediately. Next, we have the capital improvement plan. We have an item for library expansion revenue, revenue allocation, excuse me. So I want to start by backing up, providing a little bit of historical background on the library expansion project and the various steps that were taken to increase the funding for that project. So as part of the fiscal year 2019-20 adopted budget, City Council approved a $5 million budget allocation for the library expansion project itself. As part of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, adopted budget, City Council approved an operating transfer of $352,719 from the general fund to the Capital Reserve. This $352,000 was anticipated savings that the general fund would experience. It's related to additional library staff hours that were, that have historically been funded by the city, and that apportioned amount in both fiscal year 1920 as well as fiscal year 2021 would be amounted to $352,000 in both of those respective years, and were going to be used to fund the library expansion project. As part of the City Council motions during the adopted budget process, neither the $352,000 or the $705,000 in total increased the funding or the total budget for the library expansion project. So, staff conferred and came to an understanding or a realization that perhaps it was City Council's intention to increase the funding for that specific project budget, and are bringing a recommendation to increase the library expansion project's total budget to a total of $8.7 million. So again, that $8.7 million that we're recommending, that we're listing right now, it includes $5 million from the fiscal year 2019-20 adopted budget. It includes a $3 million allocation that was approved by City Council on November 19th of 2019. That $3 million was initiated through an interfund, excuse me, through a general fund loan that is to be repaid from the Capital Reserve within a three-year period. And then lastly, the $705,000 would be, is a recommended increase to that project's budget, and is directly related to the $352,000 that the general fund will be experiencing and realizing in savings over a two-year period. Next item we have here is the Sports Center interior improvements. Staff are currently working on seismic upgrades, planning to work on seismic upgrades that will require the, the Sports Center facility to be closed to the public. Currently, the Sports Center interior improvement CIP project is slated for fiscal, is slated to commence in fiscal year 2021. But in, in efforts to only have to close the facility one time rather than twice, staff are recommending that council approve the advanced commencement of this particular CIP project sooner rather than later, to avoid that multiple facility closure.
So the council didn't approve the interior improvement for Sports Center, right? We only approved the seismic upgrade?
Correct.
And so we are being asked today to approve interior improvements for Sports Center?
Correct. So the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program budget would be amended if City Council ordered to approve it this evening. The CIP budget would be amended to include this $1.4 million. And again, the reason is to avoid having to close the facility multiple times.
Yeah, that makes sense. However, $1.4 million is a big dollar amount, so what's included?
I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Lee.
All right. Good evening. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. So it would improve the front lobby of the Sports Center. It would improve the men's and women's locker room, restrooms, and showers. That would be the renovation.
What is the problem with the restrooms and the lobby now?
The last time there was any renovation at the facility was in 2004, so it's just, it's just getting antiquated, old, more costly to maintain. It's a need, it's just a need of getting spurs done.
So, I mean, what are you doing to the restrooms and the lobby?
There's completely getting redone. I mean, we're just removing it and putting in, you know, new fixtures, new tile floors, new, you know, new walls. Everything would get refurbished.
But in case this council intends to put something else at the Sports Center, this $1.4 million would be wasted, right? So, do we have to do these upgrades now?
No, you don't. You know, the seismic project is going to, it will proceed, and it's just, we can do the, we can do both items of work.
So 2004, it's like 15 years, right? That's, why is the condition, how bad is the condition?
Well, it's a well-used facility, and so those types, you know, restrooms take a lot of wear and tear because of the environment, so, yeah, they're, they're in need of replacement. I would imagine the members would agree with that as well.
How many, how big of a space that will be improved? I mean, like, how many?
Oh, I can't, showers or stalls? Yeah, I don't have that information. Yeah, I know there's multiple showers in there. There's, there's a locker room that would be, be redone in both, both men's and women's spaces.
So are they, do they just look old, or do you need to replace all the pipes? What exactly is old?
Yeah, the fixtures would be replaced. There's, there's tile floors and walls that would be replaced. The partitions for the restrooms would be replaced, so it'd be a complete makeover.
I would ask, maybe you could provide a few pictures so that we can visualize to what degree, I mean, $1.4 million, well, the lobby, okay, $50,000, restroom, tile, partitions, fixtures, okay, $75,000?
Welcome to the public sector, John.
Yeah, and, and so, it sure seems like there's more to be done than two restrooms in a lobby. And so if we had, you know, kind of a better idea, that represents $1.4 million, we know that, wow, and just a couple pictures to, so that we kind of know, yep, it really is time to replace it. You know, is it, is it really CIP, or should, you know, Parks and Rec take those pictures? I mean, they oversee the Sports Center?
Well, I, yeah, I'm remiss in not having photos to show you tonight.
Yeah, and, well, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, it's not really your job to take the pictures, maybe, but...
Well, it is, it is a Public Works CIP. We're supporting Parks, Parks and Rec Department.
Yeah, so you're supporting, they're the ones, I'm thinking, they're the ones that are requesting, you know, hey, it's time to do this type of activity. And so, yeah, but a few pictures would help, so...
And I may be able to locate them when I get back over to my chair.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure how that affects us tonight, but it would have been nice to have that.
I'm just wondering procedurally here if we should go through the whole thing and then maybe go through our comments? Because, I mean, I'd like to comment on this too, but I, I'm kind of thinking maybe we look at the whole thing, and then we can come back and hit these items that we have some concerns about.
Not too much longer.
Yeah, and part of the project... Yeah, and, and part of the project I did mention is uh there is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of required ADA improvements because we're, we're doing, we're doing the works. That, that, that is part of it and that would be done out of the tennis courts, to make two tennis courts ADA assessable.
And the restrooms.
Yeah, and, and whatever ADA improvements would be needed at the restroom, so it would be part of it as well. I'll look for some photos as you look at other items.
So this next slide is a summary of the non-departmental requests, um again, pertaining to the library expansion. This is, um, I want to be clear that what, what this slide is indicating is a transfer of the three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars from the general fund directly to that library expansion project. So we're gonna um arrive at a total uh project budget of eight point seven million dollars. And this three hundred and fifty-two thousand that is being recommended uh for approval is going to be the savings that the general fund will experience um and realize in fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So this would be year two of the, of the save, of general fund savings. And then, of course, the uh, the non-departmental transfer in the twenty million dollars also from the general fund. So I won't read the recommendations, um, they're, they're on the slide for reference and review, um, but I would like to just briefly highlight the next steps. Um, and as Christina mentioned, in the budget cycle, you'll be receiving a third quarter report and during the month of May. And in regards to the biennial budget, uh, we have slated on our schedules, the capital improvement program prioritization, March nineteenth, revenue measures forecast, this will be part two, um slated for April thirteenth. Community budget meeting, again, planned for the second or third week of April, consistent with last fiscal year. And as always, uh, budget team will target, um, make the deadline of a proposed budget being printed on May first. Proposed budget hearing is planned for March, uh, excuse me, May nineteenth, um, and then final budget hearing for adoption on June sixteenth. If there's any questions, we are available.
All right, um, before we go to questions, let's, we have one speaker card, Jennifer Griffin.
Um, we heard a lot about hotels tonight and what is the current TOT and would it be worth raising it? We haven't talked about that for a while. I was actually here when they raised it the last time, probably about four years ago. And we're getting a lot, whole crop of new hotels and it might be an additional source of revenue. So if you guys could talk about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So what is our TOT percentage now?
It is currently at twelve percent and has been so since, I believe it was January first, two thousand and twelve.
And I think Palo Alto is at much higher, isn't it?
Fourteen or fifteen percent.
Yeah, so that is a, something we could consider as our revenue measure. Um, okay. All right, so bring it back to council.
Yeah.
Rod.
Thank you. Um, I, I've used the sports center uh on occasion. I appreciate that um we may want to renovate it and renew it, um, but frankly, it's functional. I have a grave concern with the, with our city hall. Our city hall has been the subject of endless study, going back to, I'm gonna say, twenty thirteen, maybe, something like that. It's fifty years old. It's seismically deficient. Um, so what I'd like to suggest we do is take the one point four, uh, uh, that is being proposed for a renovation of the sports center and put it into a fund uh for fixing up city hall. And furthermore, that rather than lavish more money on a library expansion project that we didn't, I mean, I thought we were very clear that we wanted to create a down payment out of the revenue stream, that we take that seven hundred thousand and we put it toward um, uh, the project at city hall. So uh, those are my first two comments on this and I'll come back later to see if I get any support on this.
Yeah, I, I will, for the sports center, I envision we do something different there, so I would wish we don't throw more money in. And I support creating a separate fund for the city hall so that we will eventually have enough money for that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like this, a lot of money to spend on the sports center. I understand the reason why they want to do it now because it's going to be closed anyway for seismic improvements. Um, using that money for city hall, I mean, it's, it's a minuscule amount. It would have really no effect on, on city hall, which is estimated to cost, what, seventy million dollars to replace? Um, the library, I'm not keen to defund it at all, cause.
Not defunding it, we're talking about just holding it to the budget when you, when you last allocated funds, I mean.
But I, I thought, so we had the five million down payment and we have the.
It's eight point seven without this, right?
No, with that, it's eight point seven. So what, what is the predicted cost now?
Whatever you want it to be, they'll figure out how to spend it.
Yeah.
Well, yes, our, our budget with uh anticipated uh county contributions is about nine point one million dollars. And um, I mean, that, that's in line with what our estimated costs are, are to be. And uh, so, you know, I, I would recommend that we have those, those dollars available when, when we get to the point where we have the design build firm under contract and have negotiated that not to exceed. I mean, that, that would be the time to really look at it at that point, but I wouldn't want to see those dollars go away yet.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I agree with you. Um, but I think, you know, spending that money on the sports center, which is used by so few residents, that, that's painful to do, a million dollars for bathrooms. Um, so, but you, that says interior, but you're saying it includes the ADA extra year improvements?
Yeah, there's a hundred and seventy thousand in that one point four. It does ADA improvements around, around the site and, and some of them are outside, some of them.
So are those required to do regardless of the bathrooms or what?
They, they are, cause we're going in there doing the seismic work as well.
Okay, so once you do seismic, you have to bring it up to ADA at the same time.
Yeah, and it's just difficult to maintain the um, the, the locker rooms and, and the bathrooms now because they are old and used heavily and uh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to second guess Public Works on, you know, the need for, for bathroom fixtures. I mean, it's, it's.
We, we had to redo the upstairs bathroom a, a few years ago. I mean, it, I mean, we literally had, you know, holes opening up in the floor there and we had to take care of it and um, it's just, it's just, you know.
Yeah, so I know, you know, my feeling was it's a lot of money, but then we really need to trust our Public Works and our other departments to spend, to make wise proposals for this.
I appreciate that.
I would also add that the sports center is the last, correct me if I'm wrong, Roger, the last city facility that needs seismic upgrade in addition to the city, city hall. So once you, once you finish the sports center, city hall is the last one.
That's correct.
Right, and um, what are the seismic upgrades for city hall predicted to be twenty-something million if we don't expand?
No, it, it wasn't that, that wasn't that steep, it was uh.
Okay. Okay, right, okay, there was, for seismic only, it's, it was six million. And then there was another number for?
Just a ren-, just a renovation of the whole building.
Right, and then another number for replacement.
For a replacement was just north of seventy.
Right.
Last year.
Okay, and the renovation was how much, third?
Just north of thirty.
Right, okay, that's what I was thinking of with the, okay. So I would say, I mean, my opinion is, let's trust our Public Works Department on the restrooms.
Can I clarify on the library expansion dollars? So I remember that last time when we approved the three million more, it was um borrowed from general fund. The intention was we would make this a community contribution, so we would try to have some features people can donate um a brick or a name for a room, right? That's why it was borrowed because we were expecting um donations to cover that.
That's correct.
So are we not doing that anymore?
I don't think there's been any change with that. Uh, I mean, there'll, there'll be design elements incorporated into the building for, for the improvements.
And you said what, nine point one million total, does that include parking or not?
That's not, that's not with parking, we were just talking about the library expansion itself.
So I remember it, the first time it was ten million dollars with one point five million for the parking, so eight point five million for library. And now actually it's increased from the first estimate, right?
No, our, the, the estimate that we last did hasn't changed. I, I may be getting confused because there's a certain contribution that we expect to get from, from the county in addition to the eight point five uh for um.
Eight million?
Yeah, maybe it was eight million.
Eight million.
Yeah, eight million and there is a library contribution that will be coming in for different furnishings and that AV type improvements. But no, our, our cost estimate has not changed since the last time we presented to council.
Okay, so maybe this includes the design cost? Maybe last time we didn't include the design cost?
Yeah, that's, that's the all-in estimate cost.
Okay, John, did you, or did you go?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any objections to the budget as proposed. I, I think that the library dollars were originally allocated, which is why most of us, if not all of us, think that the budget was something like eight point seven million. Um, but I think that was just a misunderstanding between um what our intended allocation was and the understanding of our, uh, of our finance department. So I, I'm fine with that clarification. Um, I am okay with the sports center allocation, but I, I think, you know, in an ideal world, we would have a better recreation center for the community, um, but that implicates a lot of dollars. So for now, I can um support what Mayor Sharp is saying and say that we're not going to second guess our Public Works Department uh with requests, with, with regard to the requests being made as to the proper functioning of that uh facility at the moment.
So my comment is to build on what I said previously, you know, if it was for the sports center, if it was two hundred or even three hundred, you know, and you describe what it's needed for, but when we're talking one point four million, I think it's appropriate to have a better understanding of uh what's included and to what degree we're going to do that. So I think for one point four million dollars, which I agree with Councilman Sinks, is that, you know, perhaps our higher priority items uh would be a better place for that amount of money unless we have more uh of an understanding of why it's needed. I would also toss out, and maybe, you know, I'm coming at it from, from not a government perspective, but within that um seismic retrofit and stuff, um, perhaps, you know, it does make sense to do a, a little bit of uh, uh, dust-up on the facility, uh, paint or um things like that, maybe to the tune of a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, taking advantage of the downtime of the sports center without necessarily saying we're going to rip up floors and, and rip out a lot of that stuff, but take advantage of the fact that it is shut down, the workers are there, yeah, paint the restrooms, paint the lobby, put the new carpet in the lobby. And if the, if the concept actually holds, you know, uh, uh, ten percent takes ninety percent of the time and then the last uh, or ninety percent takes ten percent and then the last ten takes ninety, you know, you, you might wind up with maybe one or two hundred thousand dollars and the place almost looks like new, whereas the other ninety percent of that would have done a lot of other things, but they maybe aren't all that visible. And again, the amount of people that are, are actually using it and seeing, wow, look at that brand-new faucet here and there. Um, so if the need were really described, then I'd be able to say, yes, that one point four million maybe is the right number, but I'd really like to see that um kind of outlined first. Okay. And then I really don't want to micromanage or anything, you know, just have that understanding because that is a big chunk. So then the, the library, my, my um memory and my thinking at the time, you know, so we did the five million and then we did the three million and my memory is that we were never expecting that we were, were gonna um, um, really be focused on uh eight point seven. I can definitely see why if the, if your thinking was nine point one million, well, gee whiz, hey, we can jump real close to that with another seven hundred thousand. But my thinking was never that it's five plus three and there're going to be another seven hundred put toward it based on that. So I, I'm thinking that, that seven hundred thousand should really, for the time being, offset seven hundred thousand of our second three million, keeping it at our original thinking that night where we had the five and then we added the other three. And that fundraising, um, and the other concept, which at least to me, I think it, it has value and that is Henry Seng and the people that uh, uh, he's associated with said that they had ideas on how to um keep costs down and uh help, taking advantage of, of what they can do to help with that. And at some point in time, if the costs come in higher than the five plus three plus um, uh outreach donations, by all means, we're not going to leave it hanging, we're, we're going to come through with it. But I do think that the uh contractors that are going to be quoting on it, if they see that we have more money in that bucket, yeah, they're going to want to use up all of that. And let them try and come in to the budget, which is five plus three, and uh see what we can do. And you know that we're here to make sure things play out. I just don't think we need to be um putting that out there already for it to, kind of like Councilman Sinks said, whatever they have, they will spend. So um, I'd like to see the seven hundred thousand come off of the second three million and go back to the city, um, or perhaps into the uh, uh, city hall uh fund at this point.
I was looking at the staff report from November nineteenth when we last took it to council. I don't know if I can show this on the, on the screen. This is the, uh, this was the cost estimate that was provided at that time. And I think that's where I was getting the nine point one from.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
But you do have a contingency there of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Wow. Right, that's ten percent, right?
Yeah, and, and you, and you want that. So, yeah, it was.
The question, Roger, I guess, is how do we manage these projects? If we publish a budget that's, includes all this contingency, isn't it a self-fulfilling prophecy? I mean, what were you able to do in the community gardens to value engineer the project so that we ended up with a much more effective cost? And is there, are there lessons learned that we can apply here?
Yeah, I would, yes, there, there are, and I think we're already applying them.
Or to a project at the sports center where we're, you know, we want to renew the, the thing. But as John said, I mean, I'm on his page. I, I'd like to see us be able to refresh a facility for a lot less than one point four million dollars.
Yeah, and when you look at a cost like that, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a forty-five percent allowance for soft cost, project management, design, and that, that's just part of that, there's a ten percent contingency. So actual hard construction cost is probably more or around nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, and we bid out the work competitively and, you know, we, that's, that's how we do it.
And we bid out the work competitively and, you know, we, that's how we do it, you know, per the contract code. I know the numbers get big and they are big. I can't do much about that, but I think how we structured the bid when we go out to bid makes a difference. We had that in the community gardens where we did the base bid and alternates and then tried to, and then what we could do with volunteers and in-house staff, and I think that that worked out well. You know, for the library expansion, we had authority for one point eight seven five for the bridging architect services and the construction management services, and they're going to come in substantially lower than that. We're negotiating those contracts.
There you go, perfect.
Right, but we can't use volunteers to build the library.
But, yeah, but until we have the design build firm, you know, selected and go through that best value, I mean, my point in saying that is, is even though we, you know, we get authority to go to a certain dollar amount, it doesn't mean that it comes in that way. I mean, we're, we want to get under that, right? And so it's just, you know, coming back and asking for more money is difficult, so that's why we put in our diligence to get these values where they are.
Can you show that chart again?
Okay.
So I think usually when a project comes to the council and there is an estimated cost, that we would expect the estimated cost includes soft cost and contingency, right?
Yeah.
We are not expected to approve a project for eight million dollars and then we will be adding a management cost and contingency.
We go in with all-in numbers.
Yeah, so, okay, so initially it wasn't nine point one million dollars still. Initially, it was eight point five million, as I remember, but anyway.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
That's okay. So I have another question is with the sports center. So I think when, we have done retrofit in many other buildings. So the cost for the retrofit for sports center, how come we didn't include the ADA improvement that required, as you said, when we do a retrofit?
When we're doing the seismic work?
You said that one hundred seventy thousand ADA improvement is required as if we do the retrofit. What, why wasn't that taken into account when we were quoted a price for the retrofit?
For the seismic work you're talking about?
Yes, for the seismic retrofit.
Well, yeah, there was.
Shouldn't that should already be included?
There was an allowance for that in that budget as well, but if we do more work in the building, it's sort of, it's proportional to the dollars that you're spending on the building, you do additional ADA improvements. And so it's just.
So the ADA improvement included in the one point four million is not as a result of the seismic retrofit?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I misunderstand that.
It's just to do the work for the renovation, right?
Then another question is why are we doing a mid-year budget adjustment for this? Why aren't we doing this with the other CIP project?
Well, as Zach explained, we're in line to do the seismic retrofit work. That's in the current budget. It's already been designed. We'd like to get it out to bid. We identified with Park and Rec staff that from Labor Day to, say, New Year's is the sweet spot to do the work in the building for their members. And so we would get the project out to bid in, you know, by before July so that we could be having work starting September one. It is just be cutting it close to include it with the proposed budget for next year and have everything come together to where we know for sure we can do the work starting right after Labor Day. That's why we're talking about.
Oh, for this year?
That's right, for this year.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, because we just want to hit that window to do all work at the same time.
We were just, we were just trying to avoid shutting the facility down twice for some lengthy period of time.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do you have like an itemized list of things that will actually be covered in one point four million?
I just, I, there is, but I apologize for not having it with me right now. Yeah, and for the front lobby, I mean, it's a pretty good-sized lobby, so all that counter would be replaced where you get checked in, new countertops there, you know, new floors in the front lobby, just to make it a better, more amenable space.
It sounds great, Roger, but honestly, isn't getting the City Hall done a higher priority for you?
I mean, if I had to choose between the two projects.
I realize that there's, it's a lot more money, but I mean, when are we going to get on with this thing?
Well, we have a work plan item to, to look at alternatives to City Hall.
I just, I can't support continuing to defer this facility that's so critical, you know, in an emergency that has to remain standing. If we have to close, honestly, right, from my perspective, if we had to close the sports center after an emergency, we'd close the sports center. But City Hall, I don't know who's going to issue permits. I don't know who's going to take care of residents and communications. I don't know who's going to pay bills. I don't know who's going to run the emergency response.
Yeah.
And we're talking about discretionary, yeah, it's just one point four million, but, you know, to make the countertops look more modern. I'm sorry, but I can't support this.
I was advocating for City Hall last year, and I understand your point.
So how much is the seismic retrofit for sports center?
It's one point two million.
One point two million. And then the interior renovation, or sometimes interior renovation depends on what material is used. Does the price vary a lot?
Well, we're not, we're not specing out, you know, gold-plated-type things, but we're just commensurate with that type of building. But it can vary, but we do want to keep the cost low.
I wanted to just take a moment to remind council that in the work program is an item where we're studying alternatives to a City Hall replacement, so-called. I don't remember what we call it in the work program, but it's the first phase of addressing the City Hall issue as a project.
Alter alternatives to City Hall.
I think that's great, and I think we know it's going to be expensive. And I think, you know, start putting aside some money tonight to get that started would be a really fine idea.
Reason that I don't want to put in more money to sports center is I think some people have thrown around the idea of maybe putting affordable housing on top of sports center so that, because that's a site that has good transit. If we could, might do something on that, maybe then we don't want to spend too much money to fix up that building.
Yeah, so the seismic upgrade is, that was identified as a health and safety issue as the city manager identified. The renovations are not, so I mean, it is discretionary. I mean, it is difficult to maintain. It's probably not the best for the members, but it's not, it's not something that's required.
Council can always approve the mid-year budget adjustment without this, and we can bring this item back separately either a little bit later or during the normal CIP cycle.
The big difference is we'd spend more doing it later because we do dual shutdowns.
But then does that mean that we will postpone the seismic retrofit?
No, we would not, because that's safety.
Right, we have to do that, so.
Hmm.
It just means increasing the cost if we do it, if we don't do it now.
Why can't we consider postponing that, since we're not doing City Hall anyway?
We're going to do City Hall, just a different way. The seismic, the seismic upgrade or the cosmetics or the bathrooms?
I mean, postponing retrofit so that we might do it together with the bathrooms when we decide on the bathrooms.
I would not recommend that.
I mean, I can't believe we're sitting here discussing toilets, urinals, and showers for this long. You know, we hire our Public Works Department or Director and we, you know, trust them to do what's right with our money. I mean.
If we do that, we don't even need to have city council meetings.
Right, we prob, well, no, probably not to discuss bathrooms, probably we don't.
Yeah, I think we, we are doing our job here.
Yeah, I mean, come on, this is one point four million dollars. This is not a trivial amount of money. I mean, we can't keep spending money like we have an abundance of it.
What about the ADA aspect of it? Do we want to?
Sounds like we don't need to take action on that. It has to be proportional, Roger said. So we've done what we need to do if all we do is proceed with the safety retrofit.
Yeah, he said that for the retrofit, whatever ADA compliance required is already included. So the ADA complaint here is if we do the bathroom, we need to do that portion of the ADA.
I just recommend that council make a motion.
You know, I can, I can go either way on the sports center. I feel very strongly about the library budget because the budget was articulated as eight point five. You're correct. We allocated that seven hundred first before the five million was allocated, and whether it was a lack of clarity or a misinterpretation, the common understanding among the working group is that the budget has been eight point seven. So I, I mean, I can support not allocating for the sports center, but if I make a motion, I'll hold fast on going with the staff recommendation that roughly seven hundred thousand dollars and then some be adjusted accordingly, because I thought that that was what the understanding was. I don't know if that understanding goes all the way back to two thousand eighteen. I think it might actually, because that's when the library first indicated that they had that extra money as a result of adding hours, and then we had already added the hours, and therefore we ended up having a surplus in our allocation from the JPA to Cupertino. So my understanding was always that that was already there. So you are correct, Councilmember Chow, in stating that the budget did increase from eight point five to nine point one, but to me, that's all the more reason to retain that seven hundred thousand dollars plus. So I will go ahead and make a motion that we accept the mid-year financial report, save for the one point four million allocated to the sports center, that we also approve the budget modification. Well, that's, that number two was already covered. And then also adopt resolution number two zero dash zero two six approving the mid-year budget adjustments with the exception of the one point four million for the sports center.
Second.
Can we just have a little bit of discussion with regard to the one, just over one million dollars for VAALCO-specific plan? What is staff's intention if the SB thirty-five lawsuit is, does not prevail? The developer would presumably go ahead and build that. That's what the developer said. We spent three million dollars to do our prior specific plan. How are we going to do, are, how are we going to, what are we going to do with one million dollars? What's your intention with that? And, I mean, do we, do we argue that we start with that specific plan and then therefore we can use less of, it's going to require less money? I mean, what the critics of the process said was we didn't have a robust enough public engagement. So what are we going to do for a million that we couldn't do with, we didn't do with three?
I'm just responding to the council's action from September twenty nineteen to engage in discussions with the property owner and start a specific plan process at the same time.
Well, okay, but then the question is how much money do we need to do it properly?
Right, and so I'm hoping that we can develop an alternative plan or specific plan with the property owner rather than do an independent one. I don't know that it's going to cost, I've never priced out a specific plan process before, so I'm trusting that that amount is put in there because that's how much we think is could get used in a specific plan process.
I mean, does our development department want to comment? I mean, we collected three million dollars and did the specific plan last time. It had a lot of meetings, a lot of engagement. What's the intention? Now we're, now we're no longer spending money that's theirs. We're spending money now that's ours, right? It comes out of our general fund. What are we going to get for that million bucks? And is it adequate to do this?
Sure. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. So yes, this is going to come out of the city and not through developer, and we have engaged, so with any specific plan or any sort of design project of this scale, you typically would engage a outreach consultant, environmental consultant, design consultant. Obviously, you'll have some legal fees as well, so that's, that's pretty general. So we have initiated that engagement to consultants, and this is an estimate of what we have received in order for these consultants to perform the tasks that's necessary for a new specific plan.
Why did it cost three million dollars before? Why is it one million dollars now? You were in the department at the time.
Yeah, I can't speak to, I wasn't involved in negotiation and contracts last time, so I can't speak to why it caused that amount. All I can speak to is this is the estimate that I received for this process, the current process.
From, how many bids did we get and what did we ask them to do?
Sure, so we have, we, for each particular progress task item, we reached out, I have a list of specialists that are well-respected in the industry. So that's the estimate I received. In terms of the project scope, we haven't really scoped out the details. I got to work with the city manager and follow the lead of city manager in terms of that process, but I don't have a detailed scope, but this is just the estimate that I received.
And once again, here we go with a lot of money out of the general fund for a plan that hasn't been scoped. We don't know what we're doing. We haven't even heard the verdict in the lawsuit yet. We don't really know how interested the developer is in doing anything other than SB thirty-five, and I'm just scratching my head, wondering if it's appropriate at this juncture. I mean, maybe we, on this, we wait a couple of weeks and we see what happens with the lawsuit. I mean, it's a million dollars.
We have a motion in a second on the table. Can we vote on this?
Yeah, if nobody wants to answer my questions, I'm happy to vote on it.
Let's vote.
The motion carries with Sinks voting now.
Great. Okay. Oh. Did, Jennifer, did you speak on this? Oh, she already spoke, okay. Item thirteen, general plan annual report and suggestions to further clarify general plan policies and strategies. Okay, is there a staff report on this?
Yes, hold on.
Yes, there'll be a staff report on this one. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development, with me here is Pugos Shaw, Planning Manager. So in our brief presentation we prepared for you, we'll go over the requirement for a general plan annual report. We'll go over, discuss a little bit about the background, why we're here, where we came from, and also a number of public hearing process that we've gone through from the direction of the city council and also what that resulted in, which is the report in front of you today in attachment A. We'll also talk about, a little bit about the detailed process, and then we'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I will hand it off to Pug for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, council. This is the staff's report for the general plan annual review. This is a report that is required by state law to monitor progress in the implementation of action items in the general plan. Separately, state law also requires a housing element report that is required to be on forms that are published by the Department of, California Department of Housing and Community Development. That report will be coming separately on March seventeenth. Just as a background, in twenty nineteen, the twenty eighteen report was presented to council on April second. At that meeting, council directed that this be reverted to Planning Commission review for the twenty twenty report, and some council members also expressed a desire to see comments on each policy and strategy, and this is a small snippet of what the report looked like in twenty nineteen. The Planning Commission met and reviewed the report over five meetings in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. They had some suggestions with regard to the format of the report. They suggested adding a comment column and suggested refinements to the comments that were presented to them. Just a little note, the comments do not amend the general plan, they're just status, they're just reflection of the status on those action items. They also recommended that a status and timeframe indicator be added to the report. The suggestions that were incorporated including a status report with actions that are taken as a matter of course, identified in gray. Action items are also graded by color with action items that are deliverables. Completed action items are identified in green in the report. In-progress but not yet completed items are highlighted in yellow, and pending items that have, on which no action has been taken yet have been identified in orange. In addition, the Planning Commission also suggested that the. In addition, the Planning Commission also suggested that the timeframes be indicated in terms of when that action item might be completed. And those timeframes are indicated in the column in the report as well. With regard to the city's non-residential, oh, let me back up a little bit. So in Cupertino, the city regulates development in the form of development allocation and not in the form of floor area ratios, et cetera. And so there is a pot of allocation that is allocated by development type. And I just wanted to give a small presentation in terms of how that allocation has changed within the last year and a small, brief look forward to what might occur in two thousand twenty. The commercial allocation, no changes occurred in two thousand nineteen and no changes are anticipated in two thousand twenty from a citywide bucket perspective. Office allocation was reduced by two million square feet in August two thousand nineteen. There are no anticipated changes to the office allocation at this time in two thousand twenty. With regard to the two thousand nineteen hotel allocation, there was a citywide increase of one hundred and eighty-five hotels with regard to the Cupertino Village action that the council took in July two thousand nineteen. And in two thousand twenty, council tonight increased the citywide allocation for development of the De Anza Hotel. With regard to citywide residential allocations, there is a currently adequate allocation for the fifth cycle arena, which runs between two thousand fourteen and two thousand twenty-two. It is likely that there will be an increase necessary for the sixth cycle arena, which needs to be adopted by December two thousand twenty-two. With regard to objective standards, city council authorized the commission to look at objective standards while they were reviewing the general plan annual report. Attachment B is a list of individual commissioner comments regarding amendments to existing policies or creating new policies. There was no formal action or concurrence from the Planning Commission on this list. And staff recommends that these be incorporated into a prior list of suggested general plan amendments for future council review. It should also be noted that there's an additional list that lists some miscellaneous comments and suggestions from the Planning Commission as well. With that, I end my report and I'm open to questions.
I have one card from Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, city council. I attended all the Planning Commission meetings of this. And I'll just say that, again, I want to make sure that heart of the city is protected at all cost. From what I've heard of tonight also, then again, it's all the more imperative that we keep the current zoning and what we have. It also, I'm going to throw this out again. I have seen a serious attempt to take local control from the city. And I would really, really like to know how we work on funding, keeping that from happening. I'm looking forward, and I don't like what I see currently happening in the state. And I'm interested in having some way that the city work on self-protection. Because I see a serious attempt to deactivate cities and just go to super metropolitan. Someone actually told me that what Scott Weiner wants to do is to have the entire state have no, it would just be tall buildings all the way up and down. And I'm not willing to do that. And I don't know how we work that in there. But I see a lot of money being spent on a lot of different things. But I would really like to have money spent on how we protect our city. And yeah, we have to protect it from Sacramento. It sounds really, really counterintuitive. But I don't know how we do that. I don't know the wording of it. I never in a million years thought we would have to do that. But I'm willing to put the money on it. I think it even supersedes some of the other stuff that we've been talking about tonight. If you need to raise the TOT to throw a couple million in there, I don't know what we do. We hire more people, we set up a committee. But it is, I think it is imperative. Because I will not give control of my city up. There are things that have happened in the last four years nationally and internationally. But as far as I'm concerned, if we cannot live on our city without politicians trying to take control from it, there is no reason. We may as well give it up now. And boy, I sure hope that Sacramento is listening. Because I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. So I don't know how you guys do that. You're a city. We're a very prominent city. We're small, but we're mighty. But I think that we should throw a couple of million dollars into that pot and just call it the city maintains its entity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So who would like to go first? John, do you have anything?
So this review is just the annual review of the general plan, not really intended to fix any of our issues with objective standards.
That is right.
Yeah, because I'm seeing more or less it's all, it appears to me everything you've described is just clerical in nature.
That's right.
Okay. So we've got a work plan item for the general plan type things. Great. So then I'm fine with this.
You've done a really good, oh, can I go?
Yeah.
You've done a really good job improving on this from last year and previous iterations. I think it's much more descriptive. I want to support the requests of multiple of the commissions, including planning and sustainability with regard to their study sessions that they're talking about in, you know, one of the attachments here. I think these are a good idea. They help to educate the public as well as respond to some of these ever-changing requirements that we have. So I have a question regarding whether those study sessions being requested or the ones that we've had are reflected in these updates. It's a sixty-nine-page document, and I think it's, like I say, it's very, very, much more thorough than we had in the past years. But when it comes to things like proposed study sessions being requested by our Planning Commission or by city council, can someone look at this general plan amendment update and get a sense of what we've covered in the last year and what we are thinking about prospectively covering in the next year?
Yeah, I think in terms of your second part, second question, whether someone can look at this and be able to kind of forecast what's coming and sort of also what we've done in the past, I would say yes to that. I think your first part, your request for the commission presentation study sessions, certainly for the items that are proposed by the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission, we'll take a look at that as part of the work program items. For the other commissions, sustainability, tech, those things will obviously will coordinate with other departments or the commissions and try to see if there's an opportunity to perform those as well.
Right. But if I'm looking at the general plan amendment update document, am I going to be able to go to a particular place and say, you know, these are the study sessions that we've gone over that are planning-related in the last year? And prospectively going forward, here's what we can anticipate as a member of the public?
I will say probably, probably not.
Probably not?
Yeah, probably not. I don't think these items are reflected in the general plan directly.
Okay. Okay, that's fair. I mean, you know, it's, it's an attachment to the same agenda item. If I'm a member of the public and I know where to go in the meeting agendas, then, you know, well, good for me. But if I don't know precisely where this fell within our scope of work over the course of the year, then maybe it would be useful to have some kind of addendum just for educational purposes. I appreciate the fact that this is a general plan amendment, not general, I'm sorry, general plan update for the council and the public. But at the same time, for educational purposes and to inform all of us, there might be some utility for some kind of an appendix that describes what we've gone over as a public in study sessions over the last year. Doesn't have to just be these commissions. It can be within our council as well. And items that we think prospectively might be of interest that our commissions and council have expressed interest in seeing brought forth to the public in these study sessions. So just a suggestion, just something to think about. Again, this is a great improvement from what we had previously because as you pointed out in your presentation, it was just a checkbox, you know? And something that says in progress is very, very different from these narrative descriptions of what's been going on in these particular areas. And I also appreciate the fact that this took a lot of time. I watched a good portion of the Planning Commission meetings where they were considering this. I hope that it goes on, you know, in the future because this really is the central repository for our plans, for the developmental blueprint of Cupertino going forward. And it's great to see on an annual basis. Are we planning on doing this annually? Or is it more of a every other year or once every three years kind of exercise?
This is required by the state annually.
Right, but the depth in which we've gone in in this iteration?
My understanding, based on the Planning Commission's direction, was that they may not be as interested in how deep they went into it with all their meetings. Because a lot of these are just operating, you know, these are things that we do as a matter of course. And the comment really is it's not an action item. We just implement this.
Okay. Well, so then maybe my comment in that regard might be, you know, it was great to see the deep dive, but maybe that's just something that we do, you know, every other year or every third year while we have something on placeholder. Yeah. I mean, just as a document, it's two thousand twenty right now. If in two thousand twenty-three, we've waited three years and you have to go back two years in two thousand twenty-two, for instance, to get to something that's a little bit more thorough, that might be a little bit too long to wait. But just something, I don't want to make it a continuing item on Planning Commission meetings for five or six months, of course. But if we can get kind of into that rhythm and cycle, I mean, it's pretty, you know, broad-based utility for, you know, this particular area of our city. So thanks for the efforts. Keep it up.
So looking at appendix B, for strategies, do we really want to be mentioning things like specific stores like a Costco? As much as I would love a Costco in Cupertino, I mean, is that appropriate to put as a strategy?
Where is that, Stephen?
That's in appendix B.
B?
Yes. Comments on general plan amendments by Planning Commissioners. How is that in a general?
That came from, I mean, individual council members and individual commissioners. And our recommendation is to wrap this up into the objective standards review that the city manager is kind of spearheading. And so we will bring our recommendations in terms of what and how these are addressed at a future council.
Okay. I mean, something like recommending big box retail that sells the Kirkland brand of products or something. I don't know. But yeah, these are some interesting strategies and policies. So yeah, I don't have anything else. Leon?
Hi. Thank you. It's great that we have more detailed updates about each policy. However, I think maybe now it's good that we have an update of where we are. But in order to implement the general plan that we have adopted, which has another twenty years to go, there are a lot of strategies, policies that's listed as ongoing. But we are actually not doing anything about it. Some of those, I think, would probably need to have concerted effort to adopt some resolution, concerted effort to do certain things, or concerted effort to look at what other cities are doing to achieve that goal. So I'm hoping after these updates, the Planning Commission can provide some recommendation for carrying out some of these policies. For example, one thing that's mentioned is high sales tax producing retail. That's the one where a commissioner mentioned Costco. And the policy is consider locations for high sales tax producing retail uses, provided that development is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of building scale and traffic. So this is our policy. And if we are trying to implement that, what exactly we need to do? Not just Costco. Do we need a certain resolution? I don't know. I'm hoping that the planning staff could maybe have recommendation on these. That's an example. And another could be like, I think one policy is about neighborhood buffers. Policy LU twenty point six, neighborhood buffers. That's actually listed, it's a gray, ongoing item. Provide building transition setbacks and/or landscaping to buffer the development from adjoining single-family residential uses. I think we are going to need this a lot if we are going to develop a lot of this mixed-use area. So that means this actually needs to be implemented as objective standards. But now this is gray, not an action item. So I'm hoping that the commissioner can think about for each policy, how are we going to implement it? So it's not just, okay, as someone proposed something, we check over it. Because this neighborhood standards would need, neighborhood buffers would need objective standards in order to be implemented, right? Like.
Councilmember Chow, so we can take a lot of this recommendations back, whether it goes back to the commissioners or to, as part of our objective standards update that we're all in process on. But I would look for you to make sure that you understand the general plan update as it is right now.
So I think, I'm hoping for the next update, we are not updating just on where we are, but also how do we go forward? Right? I think that's.
Implementation.
Yeah, Mountain View has this. They have recommendations on what we should do next to carry out. Yeah, update is required by the state law. So I wonder if we can do one step further to do that. Another good policy we have is encourage new businesses and retain existing businesses that provide local shopping and services add to municipal revenues, contribute to economy, vitality, and enhance the city's physical environment. That's strategy LU nine point one point three. That seems to be similar to what I was proposing for healthy retail ordinance to encourage retail that provide local shopping that we need in Cupertino. And so that will need a certain adoption of policy and not just ongoing implementation as the comment says. So, yeah.
Thank you. So when I look at page fifteen of this plan as written, it says, "Staff directed to initiate a specific plan, max of fifteen hundred units of housing for the entire Valco Shopping District Special Area, inclusive of all housing and density bonuses." And it goes on for ways. And then it says, too, "Reduce amount of commercial required to four hundred thousand square feet exclusive of Simeon." I can't understand how that could possibly be economically feasible. If we've just voted to allocate, this council's just voted, over my objection, to allocate one million and sixty-nine thousand dollars on a Valco-specific plan that won't be economically feasible, given this as a parameter set, I'm just wondering, you know, what we're doing here. So that's my first comment on this. The second is, wow, so I see all these comments from individual commissioners. And there are a whole bunch of them, right? There are unformed ideas. It's just, I said something at a meeting and so it got written down by staff. So yes, a Costco at. written down by staff. So yes, a Costco at, at Valco, what else did I see here? Preserving existing shopping centers, retail even in new developments. Well, maybe, but sometimes land uses change. I mean, do we do that at all costs? Do we do that if John doesn't like height to be so high? Do we, I mean, what do we do with that? "Determine whether the city has land use authority over community college." Okay, but that's, it's an interesting thought that's thrown out. My, my point is, this is a grab bag of comments that haven't, haven't been melded through a process into an effective policy document. You can't, and I just don't see the point of, what you're asking us to do tonight is to authorize a city manager to incorporate the list of general plan amendment suggestions made by individual planning commissioners into the previous list. I can't support putting a whole grab bag of individual comments that haven't been conformed through a process into, into this general plan annual report. The fact that people have ideas, great, but I just don't see taking all unformed suggestions and incorporating them in this plan. And if you'll excuse me, Mayor, I have to go run a meeting in the morning, so having made that comment, you'll do whatever you're gonna do.
Okay.
I feel like I received the report.
Do you want to comment on that? I didn't think that all those suggestions were going in.
It's not to be added to the report.
Right.
It's just wrapped the group, just there were, we had a lot of.
It says incorporate them into the previous list of suggested general plan amendments within the general plan and objective standards.
Staff can respond.
Um, the, back in between June and October last year, the planning commission and the city council solicited comments from members of the public with regard to general plan objective standards and general plan amendments that could benefit from clarification. And that was, as described by you, Councilmember Sinks, was a grab bag of, of things, comments from different members of the public and council members and planning commissioners. And this would just be appended to that list and we're, the city manager is going through a process right now to kind of figure out how to evaluate and bring back to the council suggested recommendations. And so it would just be incorporated into part of that process.
So you would ask us at the council, even though it hadn't been through the planning commission, even though individual comments, we'd be sitting here deliberating on each one of these points?
No, that's not, I think there is an existing grab bag that we have come in, that's, they are going through. So this will be, just be added to that grab bag. And the staff will evaluate. Most of those probably won't be on top. Many probably will fall down. So they will just be, there is an existing grab bag, right?
That's right.
So, so I want to comment on, you know, Rod, you mentioned page 15 and the maximum of 1,500 units. I would just remind everyone that that rezoning of that acreage to housing was because of that warning letter or the letter we got from HCD saying we'd be out of compliance with our housing element if the SB 35 plan did not move forward. I don't, I can't speak for all the other council members, but I'm not thinking that anyone here would, would think that that would all be all the housing that would go in there in the future.
Are you talking about the 1,500?
Right, the 1,500.
Oh, well, that, it's encouraging to hear you say that.
I mean, that, that was, hey, we had to rush that through after the HCD warning letter, which, you know, yeah, to be honest, we should have thought about that. What if SB 35 doesn't happen? We better have that enough land rezoned so we're still compliant with the 389 plus density bonus units that, that our Rena required. So we did, we did do that just in case, for whatever reason, SB 35 or some other plan doesn't, doesn't go through.
Can I make a quick comment since Councilman Sinks is gonna leave?
Sure, okay.
I think we're smarter than you're thinking we are. We toured with the developer, Monticello, Santa Clara Square, Rose Bowl, Sunnyvale Town Center. Monticello, 825 apartments on 16 acres. Do the math and get 50 acres. There's not a single office there. Santa Clara Square, 1,600 units on 40 acres, no office. Nuovo, up at Lawrence, is 32 acres, 957 rent, housing units, 450 for sale and 500 that are apartments, no office. There is an ability to build housing without office and we've talked to these developers, the most recent one being Sunnyvale Town Center, that Sand Hill lost in bankruptcy and yet somebody else came in and bought it and they're finishing the project as is. And so there really is things that can be done that go beyond the, the mentality of gotta have this 2 million square feet of office that's going to drastically hurt our housing situation.
So I hear where you're coming from. All I'm asking, right, is that when we, if we queue up further work with this million bucks.
Yep.
That we really go do our economics homework, right?
Absolutely.
If we, look, if, if the SB 35 project approval is confirmed by the court and we don't have something that is as attractive as that, it won't get done, right? And that, that's, that's kind of fundamentally where I'm, I'm hoping we land, right? If, if we want to do something else that they're willing to do as an alternative to 35, great. But I know, right, as a starting point, it's gotta be, it's gotta be economically feasible. So maybe you're right, right? Maybe we'll learn that we can do it all without office.
The, keep in mind, SB 35, one half of those units are all BMR units.
Yeah, right. So that's expensive, right?
And, and can I just bring it back? I think we're talking about.
Okay, sure.
Where we are in the progress of implementing the general plan.
We're digressing here.
And whether that's reflected in this.
I mean, we don't really, are not really doing much here other than.
Well, I appreciate the dialogue, John. I do. And I appreciate the homework you.
We're receiving the review report and we're authorizing the city manager to incorporate the list of suggestions, I guess, as she deems appropriate, might be, because I don't think everyone.
They're not gonna just get written into this list, are they? Oh, okay. Well, I'm feeling a lot better.
I mean, it seems like this is authorizing you to incorporate the list. It implies that you are incorporating the whole list.
To incorporate it into my process.
Into your what?
Into the objective standards review process that I'm already in.
Well, I'll move that. I'll move this item with that stipulation then.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay.
Let's vote without any more discussion. No, let's vote. We're done.
Okay.
We don't have any more time. It's already almost.
Well, we do need four people to call a vote.
Right.
We need four to call that.
Yeah, Rosenberg's rules, two-thirds.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, not, okay.
So, sorry. And there's some of this, the data, some of those, like LU 914 says ongoing implementation via the city's work program at council's direction, but some others says no action item. Isn't, what's the difference? This is like no action item. It's via city's work program. So why do we have, what's the difference? Yeah?
In, in this case, it's basically calling for a review and updating of land use and zoning requirements particularly. So it would require authorization from the city council to actually move that forward. The, some of the other ones are really just things that staff is, can just implement as part of their daily operations.
Oh, so this review to land zoning, land use or zoning requirements to attract high-quality sales tax-producing business would require council action?
Correct.
The others?
Because there would be an update to zoning and land use requirements.
Okay. And for example, for homestead concept area, I think that's, this is page 19, policy LU 23.1, Homestead Special Area Conceptual Plan. This is orange, which means pending. And the comment is no action has been taken with regard to creating a conceptual plan for homestead special area. Do we have this on the agenda on any work program? Just haven't taken action?
It has never appeared on a work program.
Then why shouldn't this be like the other ones, not an action item?
It is an actionable item. The city could adopt a homestead conceptual, a homestead, sorry, a special area conceptual plan and, but no action has been taken so far. It has never appeared on a work program item.
And why is this pending and not just like, okay, so this is pending?
I respectfully.
Because, okay, so this is, so pending in orange means it needs an action item from the council to be carried out.
That's right. It needs to appear and we need authorization in order to do something about that particular policy or strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think we're ready for a vote.
Oh, great. Okay.
Call the vote.
Let's vote.
With your lights, welcome.
Motion carries with Sinks absent.
Okay, so we are on, there's no more oral communications. We're on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Staff comments. Deb, Heather, staff comments.
I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Future agenda items. So, one thing we need to put on the agenda is to decide if we're gonna continue on the Santa Cruz, Santa Clara Airport Roundtable.
We have that.
And they would like to know that fairly soon.
I believe we've agendized that for March 17th.
Okay.
You'll see that in your, your agenda review.
Can you give us a list of everything that is going to be agendized? Any that have dates, by all means, put those dates, but so at least then we don't start proposing things like cell tower study sessions that are already.
They're in your items of interest, in your draft agendas, in your dates-to-be-determined document. All listed there.
So how are we gonna do the, the DA for the Deansa Hotel? Can that come back at the next meeting? Is, or is it gonna take longer than that?
I don't think so. We'll see. We'll try and bring, we'll bring it back as soon as we can.
Okay. Right, and then we'd like something on a future agenda about TOT increase. Darcy, you have any future agenda stuff? You must.
I don't, thank you.
Okay, how about, John?
I'll wait and read the items already.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. I mean, I see it at the agenda reviews, but I don't think everyone else sees that whole long list.
They, they see it in the IOI.
Oh, okay.
The whole, long list, okay. You're talking about the dates to be determined?
Right. I mean, we have a long list of agenda items that, you know, if we did them all as soon as we could, it would be, our meetings would all go till 4:00 AM.
So, I, I'd hope that we all get to, you know, prioritize, you know, like maybe we each say, you know, put a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so that like cell towers are just left out and wind up being in 2021. I mean, I hope you'll, you'll look at how we would like the items prioritized too.
Yeah, and you can talk, and in the one-on-ones, you can mention that to, to Deb. But we are trying to put them on the agenda at the appropriate time. Like with cell towers, we want to know what the outcome of the, the court case is, right? But we're not, we're actually not gonna wait that long, you're right. Okay. Okay, Leon, do you have any agenda items?
Sorry, it's related to the, so I think it seems we have a lot of items from the general plan that require action from the council. It needs to be put on the council work program. So I request that next time when we do work program, we do, we have this list from the general plan so that we at least have this list of actions that would be required to implement general plan.
Are you talking about the next time you do the general plan, the 2020?
Next time we do work program, like homestead conceptual plan.
I know, but which one? So you have an upcoming 2020, fiscal year 2021, and then the following one is 2122?
The next one. I think this time is too late. But next time in the future, I think we need to have a good idea of how to implement the general plan we do have here. And similarly, that goes for other plans we have, economic development plan or other things. If something require council action, we need to have a list so that we don't always like grab something from the air.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, I, I'd like to request that in our process flow chart on our council agendas, that there's actually some kind of mention as to when city council deliberates. I know that's, you know, after motions, deliberations allowed during motions, but there's nothing during, in the process flow chart that, that reflects that. My other request is that at least from a process perspective, that we do a review of our municipal code to see, to ensure, I think this should be done on a periodic basis frankly, that the city is following the requirements of the code. I mean, I, I don't want to put a huge project on the city attorney, city attorney's office plate, but I think if we can start thinking about how we ensure compliance, under our municipal code, our city manager has the ultimate responsibility for ensuring that compliance. I would just like to get that on, on your radar, you know. And I realize that for all practical purposes, every jurisdiction has a number of, you know, codes and laws that aren't followed, you know, and some that are really antiquated. But just as a, you know, best practice for, for our city, at least, you know, from, from the really obvious structural requirements, making sure that we're doing that on kind of a periodic, even if it's an annual type of basis, that's my request.
Likely we could do that in segments maybe, because a municipal code is like.
Right, it's a long municipal code, I agree. I mean, but just, you know, let's say, talking about the most basic job functions, right, that are reflected, you know, the manager, the attorney, the city clerk, the various responsibilities of each of our commissions and committees, making sure that we're in compliance with those types of things. I mean, just because if you're a member of the public and looking at these, you might get the sense that, well, if I have an issue here, I would go to this commission. But if it's kind of changed and sort of practiced and morphed over time, then I think it's good to kind of keep that in line with what's being described in, in our, in our code. So, just, just a comment, thanks.
Okay.
Actually, I had the same question as Darcy regarding the flow chart. When do we deliberate? But then I find out that it's at the very bottom. It's after we, someone makes a motion and there is a second, and then the council discuss the motion. So that's, it seems we usually would do some discussion first and then have the motion because we need to decide what to mo- motion, right? And then also, I'd like to point out that we actually have, during the staff report, we have council member ask questions there. So actually, we have been doing that, but sometimes we were discouraged from asking clarifying questions when the staff is presenting. But that's actually in our flow chart. So.
Right, maybe just adding the word deliberate, discusses and deliberates to make sure that we, you know, clarify that point. I mean, if the expectation is that we don't make comments that are substantive, that are not question-oriented in nature until the very end, until a motion is placed on the table.
Right, and then a public comment.
Right, that should be a public, that, that should be a common expectation.
So, yeah, maybe ask clarifying questions on top and maybe add council deliberation. It might happen before. It might happen before the votes, right?
Right, I mean, that would be nice, to be able to have a discussion as to what would be supported, you know, before a motion is brought, so that's a good point. But near the end, I agree that that makes a lot of sense procedurally, if we're going to be a council of five listening to the public, we should be asking questions on their behalf and on our own behalf, of course. And then at the very end, you know, once everything's been, you know, presented...
And then notice at the very top, we are supposed to disclose any site visits and outside communications. Can we, can the staff remind us to do that, because I don't always remember?
Right.
I did meet with African, Project African, with Goodyear Hotel, so...
Oh, you did?
I mean, not this time, that was before last time.
Right, in the past, you are supposed to disclose that. And I think we all did, didn't we? I mean, I did.
Last time maybe we did, yeah, this time I did.
I didn't disclose, but I didn't meet.
Oh, okay.
I think we understand your comments, feedbacks, to clarify.
And then also, an agenda item regarding revising the municipal code regarding city attorney time, based on, trying to rein in city attorney costs, sorry, Heather, but, because we are spending tens of thousands of dollars that are probably unnecessary the way we're doing it now. Anything else?
Hmm.
Great.